And you're live.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling in the meeting of the college board meeting, two board meetings at 6:00 line.
Oh, he did. I know, he was like, "Oh, that is."
Holly is not here tonight, so I will be standing in her place during the meeting. My apologies, out of time. First order of business is to appoint a process observer. Is there a volunteer? Thank you. Any agenda adjustments?
Nope, not at this time.
Anyone? And we have meeting minutes to approve. Looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 17th, 2019 with the following amendments offered. One is to correct the title of Mr. Thompson from director to assistant superintendent of student services. Second is page four, line 28, replace comma with a period at the end of the sentence. Page five, line one, replace regarding with regard. And one that I'm offering that was not in the outline that was set up is on page eight, line 44, to replace joiner with jointer with a T in it. It's just a technical correction here to the description of the equipment. I have a motion to approve with those amendments.
So moved.
Move by Cindy, second.
Second.
Second by Krista. Any discussion or the questions? See, none, all those in favor? Abstentions? Okay, and that, so that covers all your results. Three in the affirmative and two abstentions. And, let's see. Next is nominations, resignations, retirements, correspondence.
We have a little bit of everything. First, I do have a correspondence from our business manager. We are entering the FY '21 budget process, and she is looking for a representative from the co-op board to the SAU budget subcommittee. That has worked well over the last few years, so I don't know if that's something we want to formally do under deliberations or just ask for a member.
I'd ask for people who are interested in doing that, please contact Holly.
Yeah, she sent an email about it.
I said I'd be happy to do it, but if anyone else wants to, I don't, it doesn't matter.
I responded to it, I just didn't know when meetings were, but either way.
Okay. We'll talk, yeah, we.
Perfect.
Okay, so we'll, I'll have Kelly follow up with Beth and Krista.
Well, actually, I have to follow up Holly.
Okay. Okay. Turn this on, Linda, so we know. Second thing, as you're aware, I think I told you last month, Patty Flynn has moved back to the classroom in a different district, and we're happy for her. That forced Tim to do his first search for an assistant principal. He made a recommendation of two candidates who were then sent over to the SAU and were interviewed by Gina, myself, and Kelly Seeley, the business manager. And I'm informing you that we have selected Yolanda Flamino from the high school. She currently teaches science for us, and she's a cross-country program coach. Yolanda is completing her educational doctorate in leadership and learning at Riviera College. She's already earned 52 hours to exact degree, so she's well on her way of completing that. She holds her master's in curriculum instruction from Riviera University. She has a master's in exercise and sports studies from Smith College. And her undergraduate bachelor's degree from Trinity College is in biochemistry with a minor in European civilizations. Yolanda did a fabulous job during the interview process. We think that she will bring a wealth of knowledge. We are working with Mr. Barnes, actually, because this obviously creates an opening at some point, so the actual start date is to be determined. We're working with both parties. We do intend to let her finish the cross-country season, as she has formed a relationship. We have a number of administrators coach, we don't see that as a big deal. And she'll be placed on the salary scale at $88,288. That will be prorated based on the start date and the fact that administrative contract start in July, so we've already had July and August. Again, very excited to welcome her aboard. I think she'll help us continue to push our focus on science and technology. I think she will do just a wonderful job relating to our middle school students. And I think that her working with Jen and Tim is going to be a very, very solid team for the middle school for many years to come. And I'm sure that Tim or I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had any questions about that.
So, is she going to continue teaching chemistry and then will we find a chemistry teacher to help?
What we're looking at is, we had a couple candidates who had applied for a position that was open at the high school. And Rick is working with Amanda, and they are looking at schedules and determining the best way to fill this opening. It may be as short as a few days, it may be as long as, let's say, the first semester. You know, everybody involved believes we have the right person, but we also want to make sure we're doing the right things by the kids in the high school.
Right, I agree.
Yep.
Are you, will she be working with you also, Tim, while this is happening?
Yeah, so, again, with some things in transition right now, with Mr. Barnes and trying to identify what the transition plan looks like, with some moving parts with applicants and whatnot. But yes, we are comfortable, like Mr. Corey said, we're very excited to have Yolanda on board, and I think it will be a long-term win for the school and the district.
Seeing no other questions, I'll move on. I do have two other pieces of correspondence. I just wanted to give you kind of a quick bus update. Student Transportation of America completed the official purchase of Hollis Transportation on August 6th. So it's only been 15 days. There were a number of things that came up because of things that went on in the structure and the enforced passing of the longtime owner of the bus company. They have, STA has worked very hard to adjust many of the stops on the routes, but many of the routes are very similar to what we've had in the past, and the routes have been posted. To date, we haven't received many calls. We will address any that come in. They were very excited because they had 19 drivers returned from Hollis Transportation, which is basically their full assignment. They, being a large company, have located three drivers that will be assigned to us to start the year. Those drivers have been receiving regular training, doing our bus routes, all of the compliance issues with the state of New Hampshire. They also have two drivers in training that should become licensed probably the end of September. They have done a wealth of advertisements. I want to compliment STA because even though the sale wasn't final, they approached it as it was and have been taking a number of steps. A couple other things. They have brought 10 new buses that range in from 2016 to 2018 onto the fleet. The buses have been equipped with the swing bars, the safety bars that come out that make it very difficult for somebody to pass. Right now, we are installing a septic system. If you're not aware, Hollis Transportation didn't have bathrooms. For the 40 years it's been in existence, it was a porta potty. So they're putting in a septic system for their employees. They are also drilling a water well, so they'll actually have running water. They are beginning new construction on the bathrooms and offices for the staff there. They have already redone the parking lot and put down new gravel and done extensive work in that area. They have updated the radios on the buses. They have added new video surveillance systems on some of the buses. They have monthly safety meetings. They are bringing in drivers where needed to help with athletics. So if we're running a shortage for a particular day, they have the bus bond in Merrimack and Gofftown. So again, that was one of the things we talked about, the ability to cross roster and gain that. They are offering a competitive wage as far as bus companies go in New Hampshire. And they start you with paid training from the moment you walk on, which is another significant change that Hollis Transportation did not have. And, excuse me, on Monday evening, at the Lawrence Bond at 5:00, they have their driver startup meeting. So they do a big kind of event for their drivers to start the year, and they'll be moving forward. Gina and I have each had communications with them. Jeff, I'm going to say it wrong, so I won't say it, their regional manager is very, very responsive. He's called us on a number of occasions. And again, this has all been since August 6th. I do want to commend them. I do know they've addressed a number of what I would call historical bus stop issues that have been corrected. And one of the goals in the future is to get the routes to become more digital-based so that we can load them into Power School. Right now, we're still on the old format from Hollis Transportation where we get Excel spreadsheets, but an office personnel would have to go from Power School to the Excel spreadsheet to find out the student's bus. So they're working on that as well. So that was positive. And then lastly, just a quick update from, Barbara King had written to me as HB Elevates. Now that the field is in progress, she has reached out and touched base with the boosters, and they are looking to start doing some joint fundraisers and that to help increase the donations towards the field. And I will keep you updated as they move forward. I think it's going to be an exciting partnership between the boosters and HB Elevates and anybody else who wants to come on board. So that's it for my nominations, resignations, retirements, and correspondence. And I'll gladly take any questions.
Seeing none, let's time, time to move into public input. Do we have any members of public who wish to speak at this time?
On what subject? Any subject?
On items of the agenda?
Yes.
Put the microphone and provide.
There's a presentation. Well, it's one-page.
Okay.
It'd be easier if we could follow. But if not, I brought copies. Maybe we shouldn't boot up yet.
Hey Liz.
Is she here? She's coming. Quick.
I only brought 10 copies, and I noticed there's more people than 10.
Well, if you give them to the board members, I'm sure that's the.
Boot up now.
Is the same room on the packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Yeah. Multiple sheets? I have only, there's only one on the packet.
Yeah.
Why not?
I have one back.
Yes, the back page is bigger than that.
May I?
Thanks. We're all set?
Is it booting or not? Well, for some reason, I don't know why, why my computer doesn't want to boot up.
Need to stay with the, at the microphone, please?
Okay, so, I'd like to talk about the.
Excuse me, name and address, please?
Sure. Bruce McClure, 23 Hanna Drive in Hollis.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the, like, the section that was called Co-op Tech Ed Renovation. And specifically, I mean, I read through it, and I looked at the spreadsheet, and I have a number of questions and comments. Okay, well, let's bring it up now since we're up and running. I don't need any of this crap. Just give me one second here. Sorry, that took a little while. Now I can't see anything. I have reading glasses on my back. Okay, so, this is the spreadsheet as it exists now. And most of my comments will be down at the bottom, so we're going to go down a little bit here. So this is the, no changes on the top side. But I found it a little confusing as to where the monies were being spent and on some of the items. So let's take on where the money was being spent first. There were a lot of items over here. On the leftmost column, on the second to the leftmost column with, that have cost numbers in them, that were allocated to what was called the 98K plus the 5K donation, which was the money that was raised from taxpayers on Article 13. That money was to be allocated to the robotics team for equipment and space. Most of that equipment that was listed in that column was not for the robotics team, but rather for new woodshop equipment. Apparently, the old equipment was sold off. I mean, there was a $1,000 plus for equipment removal. I hope that wasn't all you got for that. I would have offered you a lot more money for that equipment if you got rid of it. But up top, there's a note of equipment removal, $1,000, on the negative side. So I assume somebody paid $1,000 to take that equipment, all of which was pretty much top-door equipment, powermatic and so forth. Now, I don't know what this equipment is that's down here on the bottom. Some of it seems reasonable. I had a question over on the left where it says miter saw. The costs that were in there for a miter saw were possibly three or maybe even five times what a miter saw would cost. The top-of-the-line to Walt now, $780, which got the best award last year, runs around $500 or $600. So I thought maybe it's for multiple, so that should be corrected if it's for three or four or five, it would be, make it clear. On the laser engraver, I don't understand that at all, how a laser engraver can cost $25,845. Most of the ones that I'm familiar with that would be used in a woodshop would be one-tenth that. So maybe that's a decimal point mistake, and it's really supposed to be 2,500. I don't know. But I didn't change it because I don't, I don't know what it is. But let's take where the monies are allocated. So under the column that says 98K, which was the amount for Article 13, plus the $5,000 donation, all of the equipment that was listed there needs to move over to the general fund because none of the, almost none of that was for robotics, for what that article was voted on and what the taxpayers agreed to spend their money on. They didn't agree to spend their money on any of that. Although, if there were an article to raise money for the woodshop equipment, and the former principal of the school knows this, because I went up to him at the public forum on the, in the fall and said that, you know, I really was against, because at that time, either Andy or Gina announced, and I don't remember which one, that the woodshop was being closed. And I suggested to him that I thought we were going in exactly the wrong direction, that closing woodshops and metal shops in the United States is just a really bad idea. So I'm pleased to see that we didn't close the woodshop, but when this article was approved, the woodshop was being closed. Now, apparently, it's not being closed, which is a good thing, but the equipment doesn't come out of that $98,000 plus $5,000 bucket. It has to come from somewhere else. If you want to put an article forth to buy equipment for a woodshop or a metal shop, I'll campaign for that. I will support it enthusiastically because I think it's a great idea. But we can't shortchange what the taxpayers wanted to happen here, which was to apply that money so that the robotics team could outfit their lab. So if you look down the list, I crossed out everything except the drill press. That's an expensive drill press. It could be shared between the woodshop and the robotics team, although possibly, so it could be shared, but I think it probably shouldn't be shared because the robotics team does a lot of metalworking, and it's difficult to mix the metalworking with the woodworking. So I moved it entirely into the robotics team, and that means that the, that the woodshop would need to purchase another one or use the one that they already had. So that whole 1440 stayed in that column. I divided the miter saw amount by three, which seemed reasonable, and put one of the miter saws in with the robotics team, which had $800. That would be the top-of-the-line miter saw equipped with several very high-quality blades. The robotics team needs non-Ferris cutting blades, in other words, to cut plastics and aluminum. The woodshop needs woodcutting blades. They don't go together, and so that miter saw would be outfitted with those blades. Although, I haven't talked to anybody on the robotics team, so they don't know anything about what I'm talking about. It's just my own opinion. I have a metal shop of my own, I have a woodshop of my own. I do a lot of this stuff myself. The 1440 for the drill press is a top-of-the-line drill press. The bandsaw can't really be shared.
Bruce, I appreciate all your input where.
I'm using too much time?
Where we suck it, suck it.
Okay, well, let's just go right to the end then. So the bottom line is, I'd like the board to get this spreadsheet fixed and reflect these revisions, which would leave around $90,000 left to be spent for the robotics team on the equipment purchases they need to make. I took all the numbers from up top and didn't change them, so I tried to carry them down. I don't have access to the spreadsheet, so I had to edit in the PDF document. I tried to do all the calculations, but it would be a lot easier to redraft the spreadsheet and get it right. So I'd appreciate if that could be done in an expeditious fashion because it's very confusing now as to, as to what's going on. And I believe that this, this allows both sides to plan accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moved into principal reports.
Why don't we start with Brian, because you know, he has a question on.
Do we want to do that now? The logo?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I don't have much to highlight in the report that I sent. I do want to point out that we just learned today that Becky Balfour is going to be recognized by the NHIAA for 25 years of coaching in the state of New Hampshire. So, obviously, we'd like to congratulate her for that. It's a great accomplishment, and clearly, she's had quite a bit of success in the volleyball coaching world. And then, in the packet, we have three versions of a logo that we put together with input from the field committee. So we went back and forth on a few different versions of that logo, and we settled on the logo that's in front of you with the overlapping HB. And we're looking to use that at the center of the new turf field as the focal point for the field. We feel this logo represents the district, you know, it spans across both the high school and the middle school, and is a logo that we'd be able to use for future projects as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, it's one of the three, right?
So, I don't know how we want to handle that piece of it.
We put three in the packet. It's the, did you bring the final copy with you? Mine are black and white.
Oh, the, if you pull it up, I think everyone has it up on their computer. You can see.
Try and get all three.
Yep.
I just don't want to speak to the wrong one.
Yep, so they, you have the first logo there, you have your kind of double stroke. It's royal blue with a white stroke and then a blue outline around that. The second logo is the same, but with a black outline all the way around. And then your third option is royal blue with just the white outline around it.
And which one are you?
I, I mean, if you're asking my opinion, I am in favor of the first logo, just the white, white and royal blue, with the double, the double outline.
Would you like to do the objective?
I can get it off.
No, I mean, I think everybody's seen it in the packet. I didn't know if this was a question for the board or if this is being.
Right.
No, it's just, it's being communicated to the board so that you're all well aware if there was any objection to the logo. It's something we've been using. It's the same basic logo that we have in the cafeteria here, you know, bringing HB and putting it together.
You know, eventually, we're going to be looking at redoing the logo on the gym floor at the high school, and this would be something that we would use.
Is it dyed or permanent in the turf, or is it something that requires maintenance?
Nope, it would be permanent in the turf.
Right.
Does anyone have any comments or questions about the logo?
That's good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks. Are there any questions or comments about Brian's report overall? Is it good? Great, thank you.
Yep. Tim, you want to go next? I think you'll be a little shorter than Rick's.
Sure. As you saw in the packet, I included some pictures of updates of the summer projects, including the renovations in 107 and 103 in particular. The room, if you haven't made it down to the north end of the building, is a completely different space now than it was just, just a few short weeks back. The custodial and maintenance staff has worked diligently to ensure that everything that was in the room 107, the science classroom, has been retained and is now in room 103. We had plumbers in this week, final touches for connecting water to all the sinks that we previously had in 107. The floors have been re-tiled and waxed, and walls have been painted, and it looks, it looks great. Classroom teacher has been in this week getting it back into a science classroom shape. So, with the target date of next Wednesday, we are right there. So, that looks great. Personnel updates. Obviously, Mr. Corey already brought up the assistant principal. We've also sent over, at the writing of this, two finalists. We have named a new grade eight social studies teacher. His name is Mr. Tyler Paray. We have named a new Spanish teacher, Ms. Mariela Carmelo, and a grade eight math teacher, Mr. Jake Richard. Did you want me to speak updates on the computer?
Stuff's in the report. It doesn't have to be discussed per se if it's in the report unless there's either something supplemental or you need something for us. And if there's something that isn't in the report, but because of the timing you want to either be addressed or be informed of at this time, feel free.
Okay.
The rock curriculum work that I brought up earlier this, this past month about redeveloping the curriculum to include our social and emotional learning, self-management, self-awareness revision, there's been a committee consisting of teachers in the school. There's been a committee consisting of teachers and school counselors that have done some good work this summer and looking forward to roll that out this school year. Enrollment numbers, while our enrollment numbers are a little down compared to last year with the graduating eighth-grade class and ninth grade being a pretty significant group in size, we have had a fair number of transfer students, including five eighth graders and twelve seventh-graders. And new schedule, through extensive work with Carol Tyler and Jean Verksa, middle schools successfully scheduled all students and teachers in our school with a new master schedule. Teachers have gained access to their schedules. We had registration, first day of registration today, so the school was abuzz with kids and parents again, and the parent portal will be open prior to the beginning of school. And then I have the start dates there. Registration day, teachers return on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Seventh-grade orientation day will be next Wednesday, and first school day will be the twenty-ninth. First day of athletics will be the first day of school, and there'll be a parent athletics meeting on the evening of September sixth.
Great. Any questions?
Read her up. Pad her up. So, not in my report, I did want to inform the board that our current enrollment is hovering around the eight-seventy mark. That's a little more than we were expecting.
Eight-seven-zero.
That's, we had about thirty transfers in to date. They're still coming. We haven't had as many transfer out as we've typically had in the past. And it's, again, as usual, it's the good problem-to-have scenario, but it's, you know, it's worth reporting. I think we'll end up a little bit below eight-seventy, but again, it's a little more than we were anticipating. And again, you know, again, happy to have the challenge, but it continues to just be something to be aware of. So staffing, we were pleased to report that we were fully staffed. We are aggressively pursuing a replacement for Ms. Fluminow. We're very excited for her. As she moves on, she's been an amazing teacher and embodies many of the leadership qualities that I know will make her a successful assistant principal, so we wish her well and we wish ourselves well as we go about finding a replacement, which won't be easy. I'm going to start at kind of the bottom here. The instructional practices committee has been off to a fast start, as you see referencing in my report. We were looking at several policies. The first one is the alternative credit. And as expected, once we got into, after forming the committee and doing all of the work around that and the discussions, when we started laying into policy, we find it's pretty complicated, which is a surprise to no one because most of us here have served in that committee. So you can anticipate seeing something this year probably relatively soon, sooner rather than later, around alternative credits, making an adjustment to policy on that. I would expect after a subcommittee convenes and reviews data, I would expect at some point the issue of the calculation of class rank to come before the board this year specifically for the top ten. We're also looking at the practice of weighting, our grade weighting, as outlined in our program of studies. I would expect that, our goal is for that to come before the board at some point this year, probably around the time of program of studies possibly, to have that discussion. These are all easy things to talk about and write in my report, but they're huge, huge philosophical topics and will bear, I'm sure, quite a bit of discussion here and in the community as well. And we're also looking at a more of a longer-term subcommittee. They'll look at just everything under how we assess in grade at the high school, homework, all the things that go into that. And, you know, obviously, there's members of this school board that are a member, part of that committee, and they certainly, I'm sure, could speak to it as well. And that committee is potentially going to be seven through twelve as well, looking at, you know, if we're making any kind of recommendations at the high school, obviously, we want to be aligned with what's going on in the middle school. So pretty heavy work, very exciting work. The discussions have been rigorous and thorough, and we've spent a lot of time on it. And so those are the types of things, I think, you can expect to see coming forward. I included the charter of the group in there, which we're pretty proud of, and that's kind of where we're at right now. There's certainly more to come.
Could you jump in for a second?
Sure, yeah. No, no, sorry.
The subcommittees are not limited to the main committee membership. So I want to make sure you board members understand that you are invited to potentially participate in one or more of these subcommittees. Rick, are you doing, are you heading up the, building the rosters for the subcommittees?
I am. I'm waiting. Once staff get back, I'm going to share this information with them and then take solicit volunteers.
Okay. So the three specific subcommittees are the one dealing with class rank, one dealing with practices around grade weighting, and one dealing with the assessment and grading. Are you only doing the two right now or you can do all three?
I would like to do all three.
Okay.
Because the third one is much more of a longer term.
Yeah, so if you have an interest in participating in one or more, please express those interests in writing to Rick as he builds those committees.
Yes. Send an email or, and let me know, and we'll go about forming those and establishing. I mean, the main group that's meeting now is really serving as the steering committee to guide the work. And then, once we get information, once that, those subcommittees do their work, they'll be feeding that back to the steering committee with a recommendation, which we'll then discuss, I'm sure, thoroughly, and then, once that, from that point forward, make a recommendation towards, or an end presentation, I'm sure, to the school board. I also think there will be, with some of these topics, outreach to the community, potential presentations out in the community, like we've done with other things as well. Again, these are major potential shifts, and I think we need as much information and buy-in and weigh-in for, to find out what, where people, what their thoughts are about the process and what their reaction is to the data that we gather and the discussions that we've had. So very exciting work, not easy but very exciting. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Moving on to, do you want to go into the four-year technology plan since it's kind of embedded? I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I agree with the board, yeah.
So in your packet, you'll see the template for the HBHS technology upgrade proposal. We moved it from a five-year to a four-year because it seems like it's potentially doable within four years. I'm not going to read it all line by line, but the year one, this is all based on kind of where things are at currently when we look at our existing computers. Engineering came out top on the list. Those computers have been in there almost since when I started, ten years ago, and they've been, I've been told they have exactly one year of life left in them, and so they are in desperate need. And that's actually with a lot of the great work on the part of Jeff, Mr. Furbush, and stripping them down to their bare essentials. So he said they could do one more year, but they're out first, and they're the most expensive. Computer science is in need of new computers for collaboration because they're using desktops right now, and they're desperately need laptops. And science physics specifically is really with our, as we've mentioned many times here before, with the great work of our two physics teacher and the program that they have developed. They need support in the form of laptops on demand, and Chromebooks will not do it. They really need something like a Lenovo, which is a little bit more expensive. Year, so the year one total cost from that is around eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand, seven fifty. Year two, we're looking at social studies, finishing what we started this year with the Chromebooks, so that would actually be a little bit less than what the number is there. And then finishing science, which would be the rest of the science department. Outside of physics, as expressed, that they can utilize Chromebooks to meet their needs, which is good. And world language also could use a set of Chromebooks in the classroom as well. One of the things that I just heard this on a recent NPR podcast, that Prentice Hall is actually one of the main textbook publishers. They are moving, they're not going to do textbooks anymore. They're going to, they'll do them all online. They're getting rid of print entirely. So that shift that people have been talking about, one of the, you know, the big publisher jumping in like that, it just, again, it's not the only thing that a computer can do is that work as a textbook, but it just, it's worth noting that more and more content's moving to the digital realm. That year two total for those three departments comes in around a hundred, little, or close to a hundred thousand, ninety-nine thousand, five eighty-eight. Year three, we're looking at, we would need, currently, the English department started with Chromebooks about three years ago, not in full, just for the writing courses. Those will be in need, likely, be needing to be replaced, so they would need a full department set of Chromebooks at that time. Also, English with the journalism and yearbook courses, they cannot run off a Chromebook, so they would need, we would need some standard Lenovo laptops to support that work. Math is, does not need as many computers as the rest of the building does, so a couple carts will get them through to what they need. And the health program could absolutely use a cart of reliable computers as well, just one.
Question for Rick. Year three, English and math?
Yep.
Fifty per classroom and sixty per classroom?
Sorry, two carts, meaning thirty and thirty. So there'd be two carts, it would not be sixty, it would be sixty total under math. So two carts, one cart, two carts of thirty each.
And English?
English would be twenty, would be twenty-five in one forty-one A and twenty-five in one forty-one B for a total of fifty.
Okay, so either the headings, heading needs to...
I could have, yeah, it needs to be titled.
Yeah, I think year, year one and year two does do it per classroom. Year three, need to...
Adjust it so it's more clear. Yep. Thank you. That one is a little more expensive for that year, around a little over a hundred and five thousand. And then, year four is a smaller amount. The school counseling department has been, for a couple of years now, asking for Chromebooks for them to do outreach with students in small groups, whether it's career counseling or working with students on their application. More and more, that work's being done online, which I know you're well aware of. And music, at this point, exploring, using some songwriting and composing software, and they could use one cart to split between the chorus and the band group of standard Lenovos. The total, the other cost down there at the bottom, top of the, at the second page is the anticipated storage at around forty thousand. That's a maximum number. That's a, and I think we'd come in much lower than that, especially after seeing the handiwork of Jerry's handiwork in the, in the science lab here at the middle school. He's done a great job building cabinets. And the total cost, again, this is a top-end cost if everything is, you know, priced as is at three forty-five, eight eighteen. Again, I don't see, regardless of how this proposal, it is fluid at this point because I can't tell you all the rooms are always going to stay the same as we're looking at year over year because classes change and population moves around. But I do, there's no way that I see this price exceeding three forty-five, eight eighteen total. In fact, I would imagine it would come in under, under that, knowing that, especially since it's a four-year proposal, we tend to do pretty well in terms of efficiencies. But this brings us up to date with our peers. As far as I know, when I'm talking to other schools, we're one of the few schools that's not a one-to-one. We've talked about the drawbacks of one-to-one, and I'm certainly glad we didn't go that route in hindsight, but our students need access to considerable technology. And if you're not going to be to one-to-one, then they really need to have computers on demand in every classroom that they're in. With that, I'll take any feedback or...
Any question on what's been presented so far? What do you consider to, or anticipate the lifetime for any of the hardware? What's the rollover period?
So I'm going with an assumption of every five years and probably spending forty thousand dollars every five years, so there would be that kind of upkeep with this plan year over, kind of every five years, well, not every five years, every year, because they're going to start to fall in stages, would be around forty thousand dollars.
Above and beyond the purchase price?
Correct, yep, because there would be a replacement cost. That being said, given that the computers and watching how well our staff has done with our current computers that really should have, some of them had been replaced five, you know, a few years ago, they've been getting a little bit more mileage out of those. And given that these are not going home, given that these are staying, largely staying in a classroom, I think we're going to, these are, the wear and tear of these are going to be a lot less than they would be otherwise. That's my anticipation now. I also want to address two other questions that were brought up last time. One would be the, currently, the Learning Commons serves as the hub of pretty much a lot of, a fair amount of the technology. I think we would have to keep at least a class set of Chromebooks in there updated for study halls and things, activities of those nature. And if you notice, I ordered, I would want to order twenty-five of the high-end computers for engineering, for the CAD software. Those classes are growing, which is great to see, but they, right now, are kind of topping at around the eighteen to twenty size per class. That would leave extra computers that if we had to find some checkout mechanism from the library if kids wanted to work on, use those computers after school or something like that, I'm sure we could evolve with that as well.
So we should expect to see numbers of this order for year one in the upcoming budget proposals?
Yes.
Along with software and maintenance?
Yes.
And all the things that go with that?
Yep, and installation.
So a forty thousand dollar a year would probably be in every budget every year.
Correct.
Do we see any cost savings with possibly not having to buy actual books?
Books.
Yeah, but I know you have to pay to have the books online, but I didn't know.
It's just as expensive.
Yeah, but I didn't know if you needed, if there was per, I don't know, because some kids take these books home, if that, I don't know, I was just wondering.
I think it depends on who you go through. You know, I think one of the things we might have to explore, maybe it's as a cooperative school district, I have some, within the, right now, everything's done by department head where they're ordering their books, and there's some folks are very savvy at getting more out of the publishers than others, and it depends on who your salesperson, there's all these little factors. Right now, the textbook companies are pretty savvy, and they're going to charge you about the same per, but there are other ways that I've seen folks get a little bit more than that. So I think the cost will go down a little bit, but not as significant. What you won't have is the turnover. Right now, I lose an AP, any of the big textbooks I lose. If they come back, they're probably not, you know, they're lost, lost, they're gone, the money comes back, it doesn't come, we don't necessarily get the book, it goes into the general fund. So that replacement cost hurts us. And this, these will be updated, so you might have less, it'll depend on how they structure their licenses too, because the goal is to update online, and I'm sure they'll have time periods where they'll want to do, they'll try to tie you in. So I think it'll be a little bit less. I don't think it's going to be significantly less. Where you might find less, is less reliance on the workbooks, and those are pretty brutal on the budget. So a lot of the workbooks, whether it's for vocabulary in the world languages or humanities or especially with English, that's where some real money comes into play, and those are gone. There's, you know, we're giving those out, they're not coming back because kids are writing in them, so they are a single use of them. Without those, if we're relying more on digital access and within programs of the textbook companies online, I think we could see some nice savings in there. And the world language department's working on that now where they're moving away from that workbook model and trying to do something a little bit more digitally and balance things out. Yep.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any details?
In terms of the proposal?
Yeah.
The big focus tonight was to get it out so that when it showed up in the budget, that these people were aware of the priority, and then the plan is for Rick to come back and kind of go into more of the curriculum pieces as we go into September and October because it'll also help the community understand the goals behind the program.
For anyone who has had the time to read through the details, I guess I'm not presenting on it now, but if you have any feedback or questions that Rick can roll into further consideration, now would be a good time to let him know. Sounds like you're off the hook.
Great.
Thank you all. Do you want to move into the facilities committee update discussion?
First, I'm just going to hand it over to Gina for a quick second just to talk about the annual packets we had provided for informational purposes, the new tech ed curriculum. I'd like to thank Mike for all his efforts since coming on board to really put forth a very strong seventh and eighth grade curriculum, and I'll hand the mic to Gina.
So really, this is, as Andy said, informational. It was the document that you've seen for the past couple of months but completed by the one who will be putting it into place. As you can see, it looks like an exciting class that maybe I'll just take myself. He has some examples of some of these projects, like Layered Animal Project or Tic-Tac Toe Boards, that just seem like really great projects for our kids to be working on, utilizing a variety of the tools in place. As Andy mentioned, he's been here, he's been really setting up the shop and spending some quality time here with Tim and is really excited to start the school year with students, so. That's it.
In terms of the actual facilities, again, I'd like to echo Tim's sentiments regarding our custodians. They have done yeoman's work. If you think back to, I, I think it was June when we first started talking about changing the rooms and doing the work down there, we were concerned that we wouldn't be ready. The science lab is ready, it looks wonderful. The, the teacher has been just outstanding. She spent the last couple of days in doing work, and we really appreciate her efforts as well. The room 107, I believe it got its finished coat of pink today. It has a, it's synced still to go in, and then some, this weekend, part of the plan is for the robotics group to stop moving in a number of their items that are in the storage container in the storage closet, back into room 107, setting that up. There have been multiple meetings with robotics, Tim, myself, and Mike. I'd like to thank both Josh Robey and Ken St. Hilaire, who are both on robotics. Ken has been on the facilities committee for almost two years now for this project, and we're really excited about the directions. As the board knows, we did hit some asbestos in room 107 that we did not anticipate, so that will kind of set back just the insulation of the roll-up door, because there are different guidelines we have to follow, since we now have that to contend with, but that was encapsulated and is at, the room is absolutely usable by our students, whether it be day students or robotics.
Do we have an estimated cost of remediation?
The remediation will not be expensive, because it was encapsulating it, so it was about twenty pieces of tile. Where the cost will come in is when we cut for the opening between the two rooms, we'll have to encapsulate it. We obviously can't do it with students in school. They may require an X-ray to see exactly what the asbestos is, and then they will require testing for air quality and those things. What it did bring to light is an issue that we'll have to start to address. In most of our plans, we don't have asbestos in that area of the building. That was an area, when they renovated the building, we thought it was removed, so we'll start to put plans in place. We have an ongoing asbestos plan that has been added to those areas, and we'll start to take steps to be removing that in the future as well. Okay. Mr. McClaw's comments. Yes, the spreadsheet does need to be updated. Josh and Ken and I talked about that yesterday, as they understand our priority right now had been about getting the rooms finished, because we have kids showing up next week. Some of the items that we replaced for woodshop, which, just for the official record, neither Gina nor I ever advocated for closing down the program, but at the same time, when we went in after Mr. P.'s retirement and Mike came on board, there was some equipment there that Mike said for safety concerns could no longer be there, you know. I'll give you an example that I understand, because many of the equipments are beyond me, but with the saws nowadays, if you run the saw and you hit your finger, it shuts off automatically. Our old saw would have taken your finger off. So, so those are items, whether we were doing any work or not, we would have been removing. So that, so you will see some of those costs move over. They were not budgeted, but again, we, every year, encounter safety items or things that break that we have to fix and repair and take care of that are, that are not budgeted. In terms of the, you know, I think we're going to have a tremendous setup. Mike is very, very open to working with robotics, really views it as a collaborative, shared space, and I think when we view this program, Mike's program included, in three or four years, it's going to evolve to where we hope it will be, as far as the STEM components here at the middle school, and again, continuing our outstanding robotics program. But I do want to convey that this has been a, a process where a lot of communication has gone on. There are emails going back and forth constantly. Then we are, when needed, having face-to-face to kind of decipher what the emails mean, because emails is not always the best form of communication, but we'll get it right, and we'll end up coming back at some point where everything will be differentiated, so you'll know those expenses. But I think it's, it's honest to say that certain saws could not be utilized. Also, we didn't take the vast majority of equipment out. We removed very select pieces of equipment. I'd like to publicly thank Board Member Solan, who assisted in some of that, because he has greater technical understanding around some of the machines than I did, so that was greatly appreciated. And I think we're going to have a very nice space. Switching gears to our...
Oh, sure. I do think it's important to clarify that, that, at least from my perspective, I think other board members, that the article was in part to pay for improvement of the space for, that's being used by the classroom to be shared. And part of that is to get equipment safe for all people in the space, but it's not, it's not a situation where that space is now a robotic space and everything it's in will be exclusively robotics or exclusively woodshop. It's, it's a common ground.
Right, right. And I think one of the things that we discussed yesterday, in, in both models, robotics looks at it as a, a space to come in and build what they need to build for their build season, and then go back to 107. Mike views it the same way with woodshop. He'll come in, he'll do his cuts and that, but his kids will actually be putting together their projects, which are very extensive, and we're very excited what Mike brings on board.
I just, I, to kind of take us, I, I think one of the parts on computer, we're talking specifically now about the curriculum, and the equipment does relate to the, the curriculum, and the curriculum looks great. I would just hope that as it goes forward, you're implementing as you go, because this is new, a lot of newness, so we're kind of assessing as we go how it goes. But the part where I'm having a struggle is because you're kind of crossing over into the discussion of the next part, which is some of the equipment. We have had folks speak to that, and that's where I'm struggling to understand, because I do agree that it's a shared space, and, you know, I'm newer here, I understand, I, you know, I have a bigger learning curve here, so bear with me, but the space right now is being shared, it will be shared this year with our high school robotics and our middle school students. The equipment piece is what's confusing to me, because maybe down the road, in hopes our high school robotics team won't always be here, so where you do draw the line, I do know there's shared equipment, but it does sound really confusing, but that's where I'm struggling to understand. So if you're focusing on just the curriculum part, I get that, and you're focusing, but I'm a little confused, because you've got two back-to-back items, and, you know, because the next one's more about the cost of the equipment, so...
Right, and, and part of it is, our focus up to this point, with Mike coming on board, was making sure that when we opened the tech ed component for the middle school, that our equipment was safe and those pieces. So what we prioritize at the SAU, much of that equipment moving forward.
Sure.
And then, like tonight, you have the first, what I'll say, significant piece of robotics equipment that will be in that tech ed space, the shared space, and then there'll be other items coming forward in the very near future.
And I guess that's what I don't understand, because I, you know, I, this is definitely not in any way an expertise area of my own, so I don't understand what equipment is specific that might just be utilized by robotics, might, might just be utilized for the curriculum, and you're kind of grouping all of that equipment together out of the same product, which is what is confusing to me.
Right.
And, and there's certainly going to be some shared equipment, and some of this does, you know, you have a curriculum in place right now, so some of this curriculum is based on what your recommendations are, but that's the component that I don't understand, and it's, it's all, it's, it's confusing to me, and I want to make sure, because the way I understood this, this chunk of mine too, is, is really with a lot of the robotics in mind, and I, and although I completely agree, school's starting and we need our, you know, our space for tech ed, I'm concerned which equipment is shared, which is not, and it's not really well explained, not to my, not to my understanding, so...
And in some ways, I would agree with you. The spreadsheet was more for Kelly to capture costs.
Sure.
Because the, the priority right now at the SAU is, is the preparation for opening. So to Mr. McClaw's point, you'll see some of these items move to the general fund, and when we get to the final accounting of the project, be able to tell you what is specifically a woodshop item, what is a shared item, you know, because again, if there is some cutting of wood in robotics, obviously they can use any of the woodshop equipment that's there. You know, we're also still working on laying out the areas, but at the same time, you know, that this is going on, you've got four audits going on at the SAU, four FY21 budgets being started, all the new hires, all of those things, so it's just a matter of, you know, being new, Kelly has a habit of kind of laying everything out, and she has the general fund column, and again, there are many of us at the SAU who are not familiar with tools. As I joked with Josh one day, I know the screwdriver and the hammer, that's about it. So they are working with us, and we are working with them, and it will all get sorted out, and I think it'll become much clearer.
Looking at the, looking at the curriculum and looking at the equipment, it's, and it's likely that everything that you see on this list right now will be utilized at one point or another by both classroom students and...
No.
What, what more?
Well, that's not the...
I had to explain it to you.
No, but, but...
But that's not the feedback.
It's a simple thing.
They're going to use saw, they're in the same room.
So first thing, wood and metal don't go together. Metal creates sparks, wood doesn't. So if it's cellulose-based, you can dedicate the machines to that. You cannot then, once they're dedicated to wood, cut metal on them, because you can start a fire.
I understand that.
So those machines can't be shared. So if it's a saw, you dedicate it to wood or metal.
But are you saying that robotics will never cut wood?
No, I didn't say that.
So that's my point, not that they'll be, but both groups will have access to these machines.
That's why I moved the wood stuff to the general, because the wood stuff needs to be there, it's wood cutting. Could you stand to the microphone, please? What's, what's missing?
The wood, I don't have any issue except the one thing about, I didn't understand the, the laser cutter for...
Excuse me, Mr. McClaw, I, I need some clarification. I was under the impression that you were working with the robotics. This is a...
No.
Could we have a member of the...
I mean, Bruce is involved.
Could we have a member of the robotics group?
Oh, that's fine. I have, I have a lot of experience with both woodshops and metalshops, and I can explain the information, but if you don't want me to, that's okay.
Yeah, because the, the... It's pretty simple, you know, you would be well served to listen just briefly, and you would have, then have a lot of illumination on what the issues are. I understand, I've worked in machine shops for twenty years, but the point is that they're in a room. The equipment that is in a room is accessible to the students.
Yeah.
If it's in the room, it's accessible to robotics.
Yes.
And my understanding from a school board point of view, and one of the ground rules was, if the room is being shared, for the most part, if there is value to have that equipment used by both parties, it's, it's to the benefit of all to have it available for use by all parties.
I, I, I don't disagree, right? If, if we're, we're sharing the space, we're sharing the tools, everybody can use everything. The, I think the thing that's concerning people is the selection of what things to buy, and the things, the primarily, the things that are on this list were primarily bought to deal with what Andy was saying about safety issues in the woodshop, and they're really replacing woodshop tools. It's not what the robotics team would have said, hey, this is our list of things we need for robotics. And, and since I'm here, I'm going to take a minute to clarify your statement. The Article thirteen that was brought up at the March meeting was not about tech ed. It's kind of morphed to that. It was absolutely, hey, we didn't get our, we haven't for years gotten a robotic space at the high school. Voters chose to spend ninety-eight thousand dollars to improve the robotics space at the middle school, so that, that money was robotics. And yeah, we're going to share stuff with tech ed. We a hundred percent support tech ed, right? I, I think everyone's really excited about Mike, and that's, he's, he's the feeder for the future of, of the robotics team. We're all about supporting STEM. But in the end, there's a bunch of tools, scroll saws, jointers, these are things you make wood out of, right? You make cabinetry and all that, that they absolutely need in the woodshop to have a good tech ed program.
Sorry.
And, and we support that. But there was another list of, of tools, and Andy's got that, there's one big things tonight, there was a few things that the board actually approved last time that we need on the robotics side.
Right, yeah, and you, there's no, I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to make, make the point that when, when my colleague here asked about who's using what, there would be, I don't, I saw the laser engraver and components is actually potentially being utilized within the curriculum. That was the one I, I had not known about.
Actually, Mike, Mike pushed that one. That was, that was his big thing.
That was Mike, that was...
Yeah.
So, so my point is that, I mean, and certainly, the fact that it's in this, in the space, the robotics team has access to it as well.
Yes, but, but I mean, I mean, just, and, and again, I don't disagree with you, just to, you know, I'm an engineer, so details, right? Cabinet saw, we will occasionally use it, but it was really a replacement for what was clearly an unsafe saw there. Jointer, we'll never use it, it's furniture making. Belt and disc sander, we might occasionally use it, but primarily for metalwork, it's a grinder that we already have. Drill press, we had one, but the one that was in there that they wanted to use for tech, tech ed, unsafe. Scroll saws, we'll also never use, but I think those are small and keyed to the woodshop. Band saw, I, I believe that is the metal bandsaw, so that, that replaces the robotics band, so that was on our original list. Mitre saw, again, we have one for metal, so this would be the wood one, and we talked about the laser engraver, so that's what's on the list. Maybe that answers your question directly.
No, it helps, and that's, I mean, just, I guess the bottom line of what I was trying to say, it's for me to understand anything, anything to do with budgets, to understand who it's impacting and where specifically the funds are coming from, and it is broken down, but I just felt like there's so much of it in the ninety-eight thousand that, you know, from my understanding, is not really what robotics or what the community, you know, from that means was pushing for, so there are two...
I, I agree with you, and I think that's why people here are a little tense, but I think Andy's telling us he's got that under control.
And I think we're in agreement on that, and that's what I have said to Josh repeatedly. It's just, again, one of the things that we face as an SAU is we don't have a facilities person, we don't have those people that are dedicated, so like doing facilities projects is the principal, the superintendent, or the principal, and the assistant superintendent, that's a regular thing. And, you know, I compliment and thank Josh and Ken for all their work, because we're going to end up where we need to be, and we'll have a, a proper accounting of it, but there's no way that we could not immediately replace safety items. And I don't want people to lose sight of that. If, if, if there's a defective piece of equipment, or if tomorrow, you know, Rick's computer dies, we're going to purchase it.
Question. Do we have an itemized list of what the robotics team needs in that space?
They have provided us with the list. We have a big item coming up that we are getting a wonderful donation with, and that's what we'd like to approve tonight. Then we had one or two items from the last piece, there were two items that have already been approved, it's just moving those through the PO process, and the other component was just making sure we were having the discussions around the layout of the room, because some of this equipment's going to be big when it comes in, and we, you don't want to move it too many times. Josh has told me as an engineer, he doesn't like to move things.
And secondly, at the end of the day, will, will robotics get everything that they need?
I would say they'll get the vast majority, you know, again, I don't know where the dollars are going to come in yet, and I don't mean that from a sense that they won't get their ninety-eight, I mean that there were pieces of that around the asbestos, the door, things like that, that I don't have exact pricing yet. You know, we made a decision yesterday, we're only actually going to do one opening into the tech room, we're not going to go into the storage closet, so that's going to change this list a little bit too, you know.
Thank you.
If, if there's concern about the final accounting of the ninety-eight thousand dollars, I, I, and I mean, I've already asked Andy this, right? Once the spreadsheet's worked out, let's go look at the list, see where it comes out, and if, if there's things in there we're not comfortable with, I'll be happy to let you know.
Yep. It's totally your choice.
Is something brief, Mr.?
Yeah, or it's brief. I'd like to pass on, everybody's right about the safety thing, and the table saw is one of the, you know, that's a very dangerous machine, and I assume you're getting a saw stop machine, which is the right way to go. I visited another STEM center that had a very interesting safety protocol and, and system in place, which I was very impressed with, I just want to mention it. So they had, every machine was equipped with an RFID sensor. Every student needed a bag, a little plastic piece that they carried, and the only way that machine would start is if they had been checked out on that machine, trained, the power switch would not go on. Only students that had fully been trained and extras knew how to run that machine could use it. I thought it was very clever, they did it all themselves, they 3D printed... I thought it was very clever, they did it all themselves, they 3D printed the little pieces that they carried, they programmed them all themselves. I thought it was a great system, I'm just putting it out there because I think it would very much.
We could do that as a side project.
What's that?
We could do that as a side project.
Yeah, it was, it was very clever and was very effective.
A side project, thanks Josh.
Thank you, I'm sorry to catch you off guard, Josh.
That's okay, I'm getting used to it.
I didn't mean you.
The, if it's okay with the board, I'd just like to touch base on the other facilities project. We are moving along with the turf field. They began the process of, they'll be working from the, if you were standing in the parking lot, it would be the back left corner where they have recently piled all the, the sifted loom and they will now be working out and fanning out and creating the leveling for the field. I know things change because it's all been run, as I told you, by GPS and today they were there to change the GPS system for the bulldozers as they move from one piece of equipment to the other. The Teigen Bond has approved Phase 1 and Phase 2 materials. Any material for the site from crushed stone to the drainage, concrete drainage things, all gets approved by Teigen Bond. Then any billing that comes in goes to Teigen Bond, makes sure that that work has been completed and then that is forwarded on to Kelly Seeley, who then authorizes the payment. We're still on schedule for November 15th. When we get down into the deliberations, I do have one item to, you know, related to the field that I'd just like the board's input.
Any, any questions regarding the facilities update? Just curiosity, at, at one point in time, there was some uncertainty expressed about exactly what composition will be used for fill on the field. Has that been fully determined?
Yes, I believe it is going to, do you mean that the top fill?
The chrome rubber?
Yes, what, what comes to the film and we went back to Teigen Bond and I know there's been concerns raised, but there's nothing out there that identifies chrome rubber as any worse than the, the tires we have on our cars.
It's as bad as the tires on our cars.
Well, mine aren't in good shape, but yours must be better. All right. And then with the board's permission, I'll turn it over to Bob to give a quick update just on student services.
All right, two quick updates. First, it's been a very busy summer in student services. So July 31st is the submission deadline for special education aid. Many of you may recall that was, we used to call that catastrophic aid or cat aid. So the district receives a reimbursement from the state of New Hampshire for students in special education whose total program reaches a certain dollar amount. And for FY19, that total revenue for the co-op was $586,000, so we're talking about quite a bit of money. So that has been submitted. Many hours on the part of people in student services, Kathy Clark, Amy Rowe, Ann Elser. It was also a huge learning curve for myself. We will have an indication of what our FY20 allotment is for special ed aid in the next month or so. We anticipate that it will either be flat or a little bit lower and that's just based upon some historical trends. The criteria for special ed aid has, has increased and it's a pot of money that's shared amongst all of the SAUs in the state of New Hampshire. Also, we are, have begun the search process for new assistant director to student services. Ann Elser, who is serving in the role, has moved over to the Hollis School District where she will serve as the special education administrator. So that process will begin. It's exciting to be able to welcome someone new into the SAU and, and that way I'm not like the, the newbie anymore, so. And I'll entertain any questions that folks may have either about special education aid, assistant director, or anything else related to student services.
Okay. Time to move into deliberations. Yes. Okay, first item on deliberations is to see what action the board will take regarding the administration's proposal for the utilization of the tech ed space and a company equipment upgrades and replacement.
Yes, in your board packet, I'm making a request on behalf of robotics to purchase a Haas Mini Mill 2 at a cost of $35,063. The purchase would be from the funding of Article 13. The purchase will replace a similar piece of equipment that has reached the end of its useful life. This piece of equipment provides far greater capabilities during build season for our robotics program. The equipment also comes with enhanced safety features that provide a much safer environment for our students while utilizing this piece of equipment. The price tag represents a significant discount from the $40,790, which is the actual price. This discount was negotiated by our sponsor, Don Tucker of Tucker Engineering. Mr. Tucker will also donate approximately $10,000 worth of tooling components for the above mill. The tooling donation includes bits, cutters, tool holders and other small parts that add capabilities to the mill. I want to thank Mr. Tucker and robotics for reaching out to Mr. Tucker and doing all the legwork to secure this donation for the robotic program and providing this equipment to our district. I think Mr. Tucker is fast becoming a wonderful sponsor for our team and we greatly appreciate his efforts and we look for further collaboration with him in the future. Again, so the donation was made by Don Tucker of Tucker Engineering, that's 45th Street in Peabody, Mass. So I'm requesting that the board approve that. I have provided a whole summary of the piece of equipment and I would ask for, I believe Don provided two motions. One is for the piece of equipment and the other is to accept the donation.
I'd like to start with requesting a motion to approve the purchase of a Haas Mini Mill 2 at a cost of $35,063. Source of funding is one Article 13 approved at the annual meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Melanie?
Second.
Second by Krista with the discussion. Is it, does anyone object to the asking someone from the robotics team to participate in this discussion?
I would welcome Josh, he knows I have very limited, or Ken, very little.
No, I just wanted to, because again, this is tech ed slash robotics, so that's my only question, is this was, you know.
Again.
So I'm Josh's stand-in, I'm Ken St. Helia. Hey, no. Hollis.
Ken, I'm just sort of curious, was Tucker Engineering's support contingent upon this piece, specific piece of equipment being selected?
So, so Tucker had, he had some input into defining it. In fact, we bounced back, we went with him on, here's what we were thinking, we were looking at a different model, something, and he was saying, for your money and for what you're trying to accomplish in an education setting, you should look in this direction and for a number of reasons. One is the fully enclosed thing, so it's completely safe. It's more automated, it's CNC, it's, it's things that, that we haven't had. And, and in his professional experience and just his involvement with us and others, he, he led, he kind of pointed us down there. He's also, he works with Haas. In fact, he's, he's a significant purchaser of equipment from Haas and through that we were able to get a, a pretty significant discount.
The reason I'm asking is I have some familiarity with Haas equipment also. They're outstanding production machines. I don't know how much milling you do, but they're, they don't like to sit and maintenance support for them is really, really expensive. So downtime can be very, very costly. I assume there is an extended warranty, maybe by two years. There are some other pieces that, the mini mill bridges the gap between production and what we're turned home machines.
Correct.
I don't know if you looked at tarmac machines at all.
We did.
And just, you're, you're buying a, a premium piece of equipment that needs to be exercised.
Okay.
Is, is the rail machine used on a, on a daily basis?
The, so the mill was, this is at the top of our list in terms of the usable, the useful pieces of equipment, so it is, it will be the, that and the CNC router will be the two primary tools that we use, the machines that we use to fabricate our parts. So, so I guess the short answer is it will be used. Now, it's not, it's not used every day because we're not producing things, but, but as you mentioned, the, the mini mill is that bridge. It, it's absolutely a step up from the tarmac and, and the others that we had, some of the older bridge ports and things that we had been looking at. And we're using some of, relying a bit on some of his guidance there, but, okay.
I, I'm just concerned because I, I found that professional machinists really shy away from lower stepped down machines, but their expectations are also higher.
Higher.
Both in terms of familiarity. It's kind of like something, you have a design software where if you use it every day and remember it, it's extremely powerful and efficient, but if you try to do it occasionally, it's actually harder to do. That was my concern, this might be.
Yeah, and I, I do understand, but I, but I, given the tool, we're going to, this, this is, so I've been with the team for almost 10 years now and about, I guess this is my 10th year. Back in the day, we didn't do any fabrication. We cut extruded pieces of metal and we, we had the mill and we would mill some holes. It was all by hand, it was very, it was crude. About in 2015, we struck a relationship with a machine shop company in Amherst and, and what that did for us at that point, it shifted our, the way we did things to moving into more of a design and fabricate. And, and that model just changed, kind of just changed the level in which we operate. So the, the students now, they fully CAD the, the device, the parts and all of that. And what we've gotten accustomed to that we, sort of took us away from what we were really trying to achieve is that we had to farm everything out to be manufactured. So we've had some very wonderful suppliers like Tucker, SNS Machine and Amherst. And what we're trying to do is bring that fabrication back in-house. And in doing so, so, so we've, we've raised the level of what the students can do by, through the design part, and now we're trying to bring back that, that fabrication piece. And, and is this a nice tool? Yeah, it's, it's beyond what we've had access to. It's not different than what I've seen in other CTE centers around the state as I work with them, but that, yeah, this is something that we're, it's, it's kind of special for us and I think if we're going to spend money on, sizable money on it, this, this is the place to do it.
Question. What was the, the original cost before the discount?
I, I know we shifted things, it was over $40,000 and this includes, this includes the shipping and the installation and setup, so it's, it's, bring it up and running, correct?
Yes.
So it was, it was $40,790, Melanie.
Will it fit through our current door?
We had that same, we had that exact question this morning.
That's a big issue to.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It's a height.
Yeah, the height, we had that, we had that question and we're, we're assured that it will fit through the door. It comes, it comes, the, the shipping container is a little taller than what the door, so taking it off, it, it will go in.
Are you going to have to bring a flood truck through the door to get it in?
I don't believe so, no. It's not, it's not that big.
4,000 pounds of, of jet?
I'm sorry?
4,000 pounds of jet?
Yeah, yeah. And Tom, you're familiar with the old mill. In fact, it's out by the, not by the curb and we are going to find someone that is willing to take.
There's no comparison.
What, what our students are going to be able to do, it, it really is, the team had, you've seen the team level up just in what we're doing and this is going to bring us just another level.
My only concern, I've worked with Haases and I've worked with Tormacs and the difference is the maintenance and it's, it's a little, it's, it's kind of like now in a sports car versus a passenger car that you get the greater performance, but it puts a greater demand on you.
To maintain, right.
Maintenance and upkeep.
I, yeah, we do understand.
I guess I have a bunch of questions around maintenance and upkeep. Cost per year for maintenance and upkeep, who's going to be maintaining this? I mean, actually who? And where are those costs are going to come from? From, are they anticipated that those will come out of the school budget or are those going to be paid for by robotics?
There's two kinds of costs, one is cost, cost of just general consumables. We would be careful, things that you don't have to do operating costs and I'm assuming that'll have to come out of the budget for robotics. There's cost for repairs and if needed, major maintenance, they have two-year warranty on it and cover, cover during that period. After, after that period, it's expensive, they, they get several hundred dollars an hour for a technician with a minimum of usually of a four-hour visit. So you're talking a thousand bucks for someone to walk in the door typically for, for us to work on it. But if they're kept up well, they're very reliable. As far as who would come out, is there an opinion on whether, who has responsibility for anticipated and unanticipated maintenance costs?
When I look at anticipated maintenance cost, I would view that as a short cost. When I look at a safety cost, I need to fix it because whether they're robotics kids or tech ed kids, they're all my kids.
I'm talking about it's broken and it doesn't, if something's broken and somebody has to come in and fix it.
If it's broken, somebody's going to fix it, we're going to bring them in and then I'll have, what I always do is talk to Josh and Ken because the robotic program has been raising and funding themselves for many, many years. And it's a piece of machinery.
But it'll be, it'll be a robotics expense, it may be the school paying.
Right. Correct. That's, that's. That's accurate, yes.
Does that answer your question, Liz?
It seems like an open, it seems like an open, a fairly open-ended thing that I don't have any estimate for. I'm, I'm struggling with all of this equipment purchasing, quite honestly, because if I go back, because you know, me, I have to go back to what did the warrant say? The warrant said nothing about equipment at all. It said, raise the sum of $98,311 for the purpose of funding a facility for the HBHS and HBMS robotics teams. Facility. I think that's a space. I don't think that's equipment. And I'm kind of concerned about trying to figure out in these meetings, what kind of equipment, we're arguing about what kind of equipment, whether it's going to be used for tech ed or robotics, but this warrant was specific to space. So moving the reconfiguration, that seems to me like that's facility. Clearly fits into what the warrant said. Putting a door in eventually, that does. The asbestos remediation, that does. But, but the equipment piece, I'm really struggling with and I'm really struggling with the ongoing liability for it, the ongoing maintenance for it, the unknowns that aren't, I mean, this piece of equipment sounds to me like it's got to have a specific kind of service guy to come in. Is that person going to have the background checks that we need to have for him to come into this building? Because you've got to remember, we have a statutory obligation to make sure that our contractors meet certain requirements. Are we going to have to be concerned about that that person can only come in after hours? I mean, it just, there's, like, it's too many questions to even try to start trying to pick through in this kind of setting and I wouldn't expect that Mr. Corey's going to have an answer to all of these questions right now.
Many of the, the maintenance questions and things you cite, we deal with every day for whether the toilet breaks or that. So I mean, that's, that's ongoing operations. In terms of the equipment, you know, again, whenever we do a new program, upgrade something like Rick talked about, the, the computers tonight, you know, there's always going to be that ongoing fee, you know? But this is about, in, in my humble opinion, putting forth the quality programs that the community expects. And I think what we're proposing and what we've worked hard on is going to do just that. And I don't see us expanding into further liability. We've always had robotics, they've always been using these type of tools. They do an outstanding job of training their students, they have a safety committee, that's, that's their only purpose. I mean, they might serve on other committees as well, but when they're on safety, that's their goal. So I'm quite comfortable what we're purchasing, just like I am for the pieces, for the tech ed component with Mike, because you know, again, even though we're purchasing the safest device out there, by its very nature, tech ed has a greater potential for something happening than say. happening than, say, sitting in my history class.
If it helps on the warrant, since frankly, since I wrote it, I can speak to at least the intent was, yes, to have a facility with the proper equipment to do what the robotics team needs to do. I mean, it was a, it was a reaction to not being able to have a tech center at the high school, which would have also had equipment.
And I think we could argue all day and night about what people thought the words on the page meant. I'm telling you what the words on the page are. It says nothing at all about equipment. And I am surprised that we've spent most of the night discussing equipment at this point. I don't think that we certainly are, this board is required, what we're directed, you know, by this, by the voters to spend it on equipment. And also, I mean, I think until we have, I mean, I'm a little concerned about spending any money on equipment until we get an asbestos remediation cost, which has all been started by this project. And that's, could be a huge number and it could be a small number. And I've been involved in enough of these projects to know that. So I have a little bit of experience in this area. So, you know, we kind of opened a big can of worms when we walked in there. And it's there and now we have to make sure we deal with it.
Just, just so you know, on the asbestos, it's been encapsulated, which is, makes the environment perfectly safe.
It's safe now, no doubt about it.
The, the price that's on the sheet of $5,250 is for that opening. That's by a certified asbestos company to come in, encapsulate it, make the cuts, deal with that asbestos, install the actual door, make sure everything is, meets code, for lack of a better word, and then do the air testing that goes with it. So that is a company that we have had recommended to us by our architect. They have already been out. They have already seen it. They saw it before it was encapsulated, so they know exactly what they're dealing with.
Can you give an estimate on, there's two question marks around it. One is the x-ray and one is the installation. Can you ballpark a not-to-exceed number there so we have an idea what we're thinking? Are we talking 5,000, 50,000?
The installation, you're probably looking at somewhere between 3,000 to 4,000. And then the x-ray, Kelly had a conversation just yesterday, the reason the question mark is there is because they were able to come out and see the asbestos, exactly what it was, before we encapsulated it. So we didn't put the tiles over until they had been out. As a result, they know exactly what it was. We did spend the $1,000 you'll see up above to have the material tested, so we know exactly what it was. And as a result of that, it's unlikely that we're going to need an x-ray. But it may still happen, so Kelly hasn't taken it off the list.
And if an x-ray would occur, does he order magnitude?
That's probably $1,000 to $2,000 because of the equipment and the time.
Going to go a little bit out on a limb there. Liz has raised a question regarding the appropriateness of using the warrant article money to purchase equipment based on the wording of the article. Is there, are any of you categorically opposed to the consideration of purchasing equipment for the reasons that Liz has expressed? Because if you are, we've got to address that right off the bat.
So, in my opinion, when we voted to allow the robotics team to have the STEM facility, it wasn't just, it's what you need to do robotics. So if the equipment is what they need for robotics and they're not exceeding the $98,000 that we voted on, I see no reason why we wouldn't support it. I do have...
That's right. I just want to find out if we've got a, if we've got an obstacle that needs, needs to be addressed before we can continue with the topic at hand. It's fine, people are not obligated to support the motion, but I want to make sure we're discussing a motion that the board wants to consider.
I certainly respect Liz's perspective and I see where she's coming from, but I have to say I did take it more for the whole category, including equipment. That's how I saw it. But I see, I see where Liz is coming from.
Let's continue a discussion about the motion.
I think...
Well, no, I just, no, I agree. I think Liz brought up excellent concerns, but the problem is how you, how would you propose to resolve that? It's not just how we interpret it, it's how the community that voted on it interpret it. So I think you have excellent concern. I also interpreted it as the space and what was needed, which could include equipment, but I'm not, that's me. That's one individual, not, you know, the people that voted in support. I guess I'm not sure how we could, how we could clarify, you know, and make, you know, address your concerns. I think you have valid concerns, I just don't know.
At this point, I'm going to say let's continue with any discussion before voting on a motion. Is there any further discussion about the motion to authorize the purchase of the mill machine?
I have a question regarding maintenance.
Do you already have something similar to this mini-mill? You have something that does the same function?
We have a, we have a tool that's, it's at the end of its useful life. It was purchased when the team was founded back in 2003. And, and so, so we have a mill, yes.
And do you require maintenance and how much does that cost?
That one, we perform the maintenance ourselves on that over time. And, but to be honest, it's, it is a different class of machine than what we're looking at here. So I think this is where we would probably rely upon our sponsor to help us out with respect to what, what they, what we need for recommended maintenance, given the use that we, the types of things that we're cutting with and using it for and, and the extent or the amount of use that it's given. And he's been very helpful to us in that regard in terms of a lot of these kinds of things. And so we would expect that that would, that relationship will help us going forward, too.
So we have no idea what the maintenance cost might be?
Well, the first two, it's, I believe it's two years, isn't it? On the, the extended warranty, the extended maintenance.
But are you talking about, there's two kinds of maintenance. There's maintenance related to maintenance, there's maintenance that is, oh, there, but just running it, not talking wheelbreakers, but there are consumables, there is oil. Most of it's labor and that can be done by the team. It's when something breaks, they've got two-year window to find out if it's, if it's got trouble. And I mean, this is, this is a world-renowned machine. But you do have to, going forward, regardless of which, whose budget it comes out of, we will have to anticipate that there will be costs on an annual basis that will probably be at least the hundreds and maybe in the low single-digit thousands of dollars if you're going to have it maintained by the professionals. What I don't know, and this is something that Ken sort of mentioned, this company that is supporting the team also utilizes this equipment and potentially have people that could act as that resource. But that's, that's unknown, whether that relationship will be still there two years from now, we don't know. But it's not, we're not talking about repurchasing a machine every four years.
Yeah, let me just jump in on that. So, yeah, I think we, to some extent, expect though, can't, I agree, can't guarantee that our sponsor will help us with this. He, part of the reason he can get this deal is he's buying $2 million worth of Haas equipment every year. He has a ton of it. So he's doing a lot of work with them anyway. At the same time, the robotics budget, the team budget that the students raise money for, actually has, and I don't, I honestly don't remember the actual number, but $1,000 or $2,000 in there for equipment maintenance every year that we just raise that part of our budget. We don't typically wind up spending it, but it is in there in the budget the students put together and raise. So we do have some money put together, or put, sorry, put aside for, for maintenance.
Could we also put some money aside in the event of, you know, repair or an unexpected cost?
I think, first of all, for regular maintenance, I think it will become part of our operating budget. I mean, just like the, the new Saws will be in the tech ed room, just like anything we do with athletics. There are all associated costs that we maintain, so we will be absorbing that. An unexpected cost, we're very fortunate. We have contingency funds. We have the operating budget. You know, obviously, if something comes up that's a significant dollar amount, we'll bring it back to the board.
In many ways, it's a lot like the tractor that we bought to maintain the fields.
Right.
You know the stuff you're going to have to do. Take a care of it so hope not to have too many unexpected things.
That's a really good analogy, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I think Liz does raise a good point in the sense that I don't know if some sort of agreement maybe needs to be established between possibly robotics and, and the district in terms of, you know, we all understanding where we stand on some of the stuff. So if there is all of a sudden a $5,000 equipment failure that needs to be fixed, where is that money coming from, per se? And I don't know, I don't know if we have anything established like that. I was just wondering if that would be something...
First of all, robotics is, is our program, you know?
Right, no, I agree.
And they are probably the most self-sufficient funding program that we have. I mean, I'm just, I'm just being honest. I don't think we have supported them going, yes, crew is very much, very, very similar. So if you looked at the crew program or this program, those two are probably the most similar that we have. So my, my first suspicion, which often happens with robotics, when there's a need, somebody steps up to the plate. I think that would happen. We will probably look at some line item in the budget just to put money in for something unexpected, just like we would for anything else. But I don't, I agree with Tom, we're not talking significant dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed?
Six, five, one.
Five, one. Now, we are looking for a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of tooling components from Don Tucker, Tucker Engineering Incorporated, for approximate value of $10,000. Move by Krista, second by Beth. Any discussion?
Much appreciated. Bring it on.
No further discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next on the agenda is to see what action the board will take regarding their policy E H A B. You guys exiting, thank you very much for your help. Anyone in particular speaking to the policy?
I can speak too.
Okay.
Did you want to have a motion on the floor or?
Oh, yeah, that would be good. And as I understand it...
Third reading and adoption.
Yeah, right, third reading. But the, the certain part of me is aware both of the words, the amendments, which has, is, what is this question? About amendments?
Okay.
But, but for motion to amend the, to amend, I'm going to say, to amend policy E H A B and accept for a third reading and adopt. The second by Beth. Move by Krista, second by Beth.
Okay, so the, I'm not sure, Tom, if you have additional amendments, but basically I took the feedback from our last meeting and added S's where appropriate. And since Bob did not take me up on the opportunity to be as part of the full technology team, I added assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment to clarify which one. And if there's, if there are additional areas, please let me know if I forgot an S.
Those are actually the two areas that I just want to quicken on, just because I think there's one S.
Where are you?
So under the, I just wanted to see.
Everyone highlighted some.
Yes, so right here, there was one that wasn't, I wasn't sure.
The fourth line?
Yes, it's that one. And then I...
So I think that, because, yes, because it could be basically either one, but not requiring both.
And that's what I was...
Then it should be and instead of...
Okay.
There, thank you.
All right, I can make that.
Thank you. That was one of my questions. And then, looks like we have some other questions. Yeah, I just, I think, the second one was just actually when you added Bob in too. I just had a question about it. And it wasn't that you added Bob in.
I didn't add Bob.
Or specification. I just meant that any member of the full technology team...
Yep.
Are the district, so under C, under the, she was talking about the, you know, basically having an alternative. So are the district's alternate ISO and will assume the responsibility of the ISO when the ISOs are not available? So just how that read was confusing because it's, if one's not available, if both and are all of them taking that responsibility as one, I just didn't, how that read was confusing. I'm sorry, I didn't create, it just read confusing to me. So if one is not available, then some one of those three people are stepping in, or is it?
Sure. So any member of the full technology team can serve as the alternate ISO. The full technology team is being defined in parentheses. That's the intent.
And that, that's exactly what I figured the intent is, but just the way it read, listing the three of them as the full team are the district's alternative. Like they are, it kind of read that all three of them are the alternate, alternative.
Sure, I guess, so like I said...
So I got the intent, I understood what your intent was, but it just, the way it read did not read that way to me. But if it's just me that didn't read that, that way, then my apologies.
So the, I think the intent was, read it without the parentheses. Any member of the full technology team, any one member is, no, is the district's alternative. And then the full technology team is defined in there. So I'm happy to take any suggestions for a change, but it was just defining the team and then saying any one member can serve as an alternate.
Well, maybe that's the issue, Gina, because it says any member, which is singular, but then after that it has the plural R.
That's what I'm questioning.
So which is what adds to the confusion, that and inside the parentheses is a multiple.
Yep, and as I was saying that, without the parentheses, I did make a note is.
Okay.
And I can make that change, but...
I think that helps.
Okay. Absolutely. What else, Tom?
Can I, can I add to that?
It's this basic discussion with, if...
Same line.
If a single ISO or ISO alternate can fulfill a function, then it's where you have the, it should be and in multiple, multiple places. So do you want to go through?
I would love to, please.
And starting with the one.
Okay.
The first parenthetic ISOs.
With and, okay.
Before that, I would put security officers.
Well, or would you, or would you say in consultation with a district information security officer? Because not, they don't have to be consulting both of them.
Okay, so is it, can we just run it after too?
Yeah.
Okay, because you had, you pluralized ISOs.
Because you had asked me to, so I didn't.
No, all I asked is to be consistent on whether it has to be one or both.
All right.
So if it's going to be...
Okay, A, and then I'll take away...
To me, in this one, it should be both, it should be both of them. When the, when you're developing the plan, I think it should be all three of you.
It's actually four. It's actually four. Two ISOs, assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment and business administrator, which is four of us are the full technology team.
Do you wanna have that by a clear way or otherwise?
I, I think there are times when getting the full team together will be difficult, and I think I'm an unrepresented, because I can tell you that in my time, trying to communicate with each other. And I just know we're doing the budget season to drag Kelly with potential meaning of.
Okay, no, you, I'm not disputing which way it should go, just I'm worried, so I would say. You need to get in your place.
We can do third reading, and you can provide as much feedback as possible for next.
Rather than go through it all.
I think that would be preferred. Come back next month.
So I.
But sooner rather than later, because I, I have taken all of these edits. Perfect, to the other two districts, so then they're adopting whatever changes we are suggesting here, so.
Just a more general question though, in F.
Yep.
The next, last bottom, it says, who agree not to disclose?
I don't see, where?
Second to first paragraph.
Okay.
Next to last sentence, agree, or the next last line, agree not to disclose.
Yes.
Do you, do we as a district use NDA's? Non-disclosure agreements? I think you should have, have written non-disclosure agreement for something of this nature so that if someone were to violate, you have a record that they knew darn well that they were supposed to be holding in confidentiality. So I would like to see them agree in writing not to disclose. That's, that's me.
But would that just be a violation of the district policy? That they are required to not violate?
If they gotta read the policy, they gotta know it, and they know it, understand that what obligation they have is they're going to have access to that information. As you're talking, the way this thing works is, as you move further down, you have staff, volunteers, contractors, and agents who all potentially have access to it. And I think that the act, the information.
So you want who's signing it?
The person who is going to give access to the information should sign that they understand their obligations for confidentiality.
So would that be part of the district data governance plan that was approved in June? Like, this is, this is more of a summary document of that 60-page document. So would that be the more appropriate place for all the details? Because if it's here and not in the SAU 41 data governance plan? You know what I'm saying? Then I don't know.
Well, is the plan a policy?
The plan.
Is it from the plan to procedure?
It's neither, really, but it is the law.
To me, this is how we're gonna execute it in our district. And I, I would like to see a higher level of accountability than us just writing a little bit, they have this obligation without some acknowledgement of the obligation.
Okay, let me think about, about the best place to put that. And wonder if it's already part of what they sign off on every year when they're given access to various levels of confidential information.
And then the other question I had is the next paragraph down in F, next to the bottom line, resources. I'm just, what constitutes a resource?
That would be whether we're utilizing an outside agency to assist us. That would be legal resources, that would, I mean, depends on what it is that we're looking at to see what we need to address any security breach. Could be labor, could be, not labor, could be, if we need to buy equipment to manage the security breach. I think it depends on the nature of the breach. Could be expertise, yeah, I mean.
I just, it seems a very ambiguous term, so I wasn't sure what it.
It is. If you don't wanna.
Amendment to the motion to have it third reading and not adopt?
Yeah, do whatever you want.
Well, somebody's gotta technically do a motion for that.
So move.
Second, second by Beth. So I'm, I don't know if it's a big discussion, but I'm asking for approval to amend the motion to not adopt on third reading. That you just had, it says a third reading, you understand? All those in favor? Got a motion to adopt the third reading, any further discussion? All those in favor?
We weren't gonna adopt, now you just, now you just confuse me.
Yeah, it was supposed to be third and final, is what the original.
But it's not final.
A motion to approve for third reading. All those in favor? And I just realized. You didn't give me a chance. Adult reports, do you have anything you would like to report out on tonight?
Not really, I have had a few questions about when the field will be done. I know that right now it's all kind of up in the air, but I didn't know.
Mid-November.
Mid-November?
Mid-November.
Thank you.
I apologize, may I?
Oh, that's.
Okay, moving right along. See what action the board will take regarding the re-adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the Hollis Police Department and the Cooperative School District.
Yes.
Do you want a motion to start with, or do you want?
Sure, gotta be great.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the memorandum of understanding between the Hollis Police Department and Cooperative School District as presented.
So move?
Move by Cindy, second by Krista, discussion of the.
Okay. We have had an ongoing memorandum of understanding with the Hollis Police Department since we had an SRO. Every year I meet with the police chief over the summer, and we review it. One of the, a couple of things came up this year that he asked about, and we work together. And everything is identical to what you, we approved in the past when it's come before you, except for 11.1, 11.2. And I'll just kinda go over those for you. Per agreement of the superintendent of schools, the SRO is permitted to have a fan in a small refrigerator in his office located at Hollis Brookline High School.
I did have to check a little bit.
I know.
I don't know where he has room for it. Has to be a small fan.
That's real, that's real, yep. And it's, you know, the chief asked about that, that kind of falls under their operating procedures and things. And again, they fall under CBAs and this and that, so I didn't get into great depth of that one. The second one is more the one I wanted to make the board aware of. The Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District will authorize access to video surveillance systems inside the school district to the Hollis Police Department and the Hollis Communication Center. The scope of access will be limited to emergency situations and investigatory matters. Wow. Yeah, investigatory, wow. Been a long week already, it's only Wednesday. Software will be uploaded on only a limited number of terminals located within the communication center and the police department facility. A list of computers with permissions to the surveillance video system will be provided to the SAU on an annual basis. This has been looked at by Jim O'Shaughnessy, our attorney. This is an agreement we're looking to add in case of that tragic event occurring. So if we had an intruder to the building or something like that, this gives the police the ability, after talking to either Gina or I, declaring the emergency, so that they can now see into our corridors as they're looking for this intruder. So they're making, you know, their foray into the building, kinda knowing where people are. It is not to be used on a regular basis. It can't be turned on just because they wanna see what's going on at the high school, there's none of that. It's specifically for that absolutely true emergency that we all hope never happens, but this is the age we live in. And that is what I would call the major change is 11.2. Jim didn't see a problem with this at all. Many school districts have already adopted this as part of their memorandum of understanding with their police departments. In my, going into my sixth year, I've worked with two police chiefs, both have been outstanding. And I have no reservations about granting this permission, because again, it starts with that most likely, we're making the contact to them, declaring this emergency. It's, I would think it's less likely that the chief is calling me and telling me we have an emergency.
No, that was just, you know, the example you gave, one of my questions was, you know, an example of an emergency. And the example you gave is on the question of when you have an emergency. I guess my only question is how you would define an emergency, because that, there's no question, I don't think you'd ever disagree, but who defines it and when that? And then you said it just in the last moment there, you said most likely it would be us contacting, not much makes sense, but most likely and how you define. That's just my only other question, how would you define an emergency?
When I look at this, I'm looking at an intruder. I'm looking at, it could be a parent, it could be something like that. Somebody is in that building, we're not exactly sure. Maybe the kids are already out and safe, maybe the kids are in lockdown. Maybe we're looking at this to be able to say to a whole wing of the building, you can leave, you know, because we know that he or she is in the other wing. So that's, that's the intent, I'm not looking, the only real time I can see this being used is that type of situation, from my standpoint of declaring an emergency.
I just, I just question the thing that says the list of computers with.
Permission will be given to the SAU, who has that list?
If somebody knows which computers has permission, then they could just avoid those, those areas.
No, this is, in the, yeah, in the dispatch's office.
Oh, okay, in the police department, not in the building.
The chief will give us a list for Gina and I to have at the SAU detailing who has access to those computers and what, where the software is loaded on. So it won't be one of these things where you can't be in a police cruiser and get access to this. You can't be on just any police computer at the dispatch station. It will be specific to computers identified by the chief.
And it'll be confidential, that's my question, like, nobody else can find out which computers within the school have, they have access to? Because then they would just avoid them, just like a security camera.
But that's the thing, we're not giving them access to the computers, and we're giving them access to the cameras.
Okay.
So when they go into the cameras, they might want the back parking lot, they might want a hallway. And a lot of that at times will be, you know, our chain of command is, you know, Rick's informing the SAU because we have our procedures. He's, he's alerting his students and staff on their steps. If SRO Bergeron's available, that's probably gonna be the first contact person to start this chain of command. But it's just one of those things, to be able to have eyes in the building is what they're looking for.
The wording of this 11-2 does not require it to be initiated by the school.
Doesn't require to be an emergency either, it says and investigatory.
Right, I haven't gotten there yet. It doesn't, it means that the police can, can do it on their own accord. It also does not have to be a emergency, it can be investigatory situations such that the SRO, or somebody says there's some illegal activity going on in the parking lot, they can go in and turn it on based on, view it based on what this says. I don't see anything that excludes that. Is that in conflict with your desired authorization?
I, I would say yes. And I am happy, because again, this doesn't have to be approved tonight, and we can, I will take the comments back, almost like reading of a policy, and bring it back to you again. I can bring this concern to Jim, and I'm sure he can tighten up the language, so that it'll be something that the board feels comfortable approving.
I don't necessarily oppose to.
I'm not uncomfortable with what's on the page by any stretch of the imagination.
But it's different than what you've.
But it's just, I wanna make sure people, yeah, exactly, that it, that people have read the whole thing and understand that it's broader than.
Oh, it, it is broad, I guess my, my narrowness comes from being the person sitting at the table with the chief. And that's why I'm saying you're correct that the wording doesn't necessarily match the discussions. So if you'd like it tightened up, I can do that. If you're comfortable with the wording, you know.
I think I have a few more questions. How long do we keep our tapes? So like, if there is a crime in the building that is not, you know, the intruder variety, how, can we go back a week or so?
Yeah, it really varies by school and the DVR capability that the school system has. I know, Rick, you were looking to upgrade yours at some point.
Our current DVR is probably like six days, but.
Yeah, the middle school were two weeks.
Much, yeah, like, the one we're upgrading to is more like two weeks.
Yeah. Does the software record? So in other words, if the police turn on the cameras, can they record?
I, I don't believe so, but I'm not, I need to get.
The middle school system allows you to grant people read-only access. So a good example is, as, as an admin, Tim's able to go back and review two weeks of, of video. But he can set it so that office personnel can view in real time, but they can't go back and review recordings. So the software system the middle school has, has that capability. I'm not sure about the, about the other school, about that.
No, I don't think all of them do, and I, the goal would be to move the high school to the software that we have at the middle school, that's presently overlooking it.
And about two years ago, we developed a policy that said it's only the superintendent or his designee who can review.
Who can review.
Previously-recorded video.
Couple of years ago, we piloted a program that was like an emergency program, and you're shaking your head, and I can't come up with the name. I can't even remember all my kids' names at this point.
CopSync.
CopSync, we still, yeah. Do we still use it? How does this policy work with CopSync? I don't even know exactly what my questions are, but how does this relate and work, coordinate?
CopSync went away. The New Hampshire Chiefs of Police moved in a different direction. So we do not have CopSync on our computers anymore, because one of the reasons ultimately was, ultimately the company went bankrupt. So we have investigated through Officer Bergeron a number of other pieces of software. But we are, we feel quite comfortable in our security protocols and how we respond to incidents. So this, this is just one more layer to that.
So I think one of the things that I think we all liked about the idea of piloting CopSync, and I think that first year didn't cost us anything, was just the ability of teachers in the building having access on their devices and the computers to be able to alert without queuing somebody that they had been alerted.
Yeah, and again, there are new programs coming out. Joe and I, Chief Rebecca and I talk about those. And I think when he feels there's another one out there in the market that meets what they're hoping for, we would give that a serious look as well.
Beyond this, but it, yeah, but I, I, I'm not sure that I, I don't, not sure, I recall being told that CopSync went away, so it's.
I didn't know it either.
Okay, so it's useful information, and it kind of relates to how we work with the police department.
Can we look at anything else, anything else on this up for grabs?
I would say yes, because it's back in front of you. I was just saying, what was new? Just give me the number.
You want typos and?
Sure.
1.5 should be SRO apostrophe S.
Okay.
1.6 to me is kinda awkward, I would move in, words in students to after attitude. So it's a foster promote apostrophe attitude in students.
Okay.
That's just. I had a question about 8.2. It said, the SRO will become involved in administrative searches. And it said, on the last slide, in no time shall the SRO request. And it said, on the last slide, "In no time shall the SRO request administrative search be conducted." That seems a little bit contrary to what we seem to ask our SRO to do, to be aware of things, to know what's going on. Says, "Okay, I know something likely going on, but I can't ask, I can't ask you to let me search someplace."
It's saying, having, so the SRO...
Can't say, "Tim, can you search this student or this student's locker for me?" The administrator cannot serve as the agent of the officer, can't happen.
Can't be his designee.
But this, this actual wording, to me, it prevents him from saying, it says, "The SRO cannot be involved, cannot become involved in administrative slash school-related searches." What's, what's a school-related search?
I'm gonna go to your locker looking for drugs as an administrator.
Is that a school-related search?
That is a school-related search. I, we own the lockers as the school. We can go to that locker and search it. If we find something, then potentially based on what we've found, the SRO becomes involved.
Okay, so what if the SRO has been informed that there's likely drugs in the place, but you haven't been informed? This says that he can't come to you and say, "I think there's something in there, state of course."
Yeah, then it's a police matter, and it's totally on them.
Okay, so, but, so they would have a mechanism for conducting a search, but you're not involved in administration?
Right, let me give you an example, because this would be one that we've covered. We did the dogs a few years ago, and we had a hit on the, on a vehicle in the parking lot. The police had to get a search warrant for the vehicle. The vehicle was kept exactly as is until they received a search warrant. Once they received that, they addressed it as a police matter and took the appropriate steps.
Okay, that clarifies it, thank you. In twelve point one, talk about some mutually agreed goals and objectives of these various groups. But this is a shared resource among the four schools.
Yes.
What are the expectations of the time or the amount of activity that the SRO will have at any given location?
It's, it's, I'm gonna break it down by district. It's about, we look at it as about an eighty-twenty split, with the co-op hitting eighty percent, and the elementaries get a DARE program and some other programming pieces.
And within that context, it's also primarily high school, or is there much sharing?
I would say Rick is here when he needs to be. I mean, it's more, I think there are times when he's spent more hours in this building over the course of a week and vice versa.
Because I noticed that all he has, all he has access to is a conference room in the other building, but he has an office in the high school, is conference, is that indicative of where he spends his time?
I think the, the primary concern for incidents typically is your high schools, and that's why that's where the office is typically located. I will let you be aware, the chief and I are also talking about the potential for a second SRO. We haven't decided anything yet, we've just had some discussions, because we are covering four schools, and things continue to evolve around safety and security.
Does Brookline have an SRO?
Brookline does not have an SRO.
No, just, and I can say, there were just typos, it's just facing and thoughts and everything else is not...
So do I, do I gather the board would like me to bring it back next month? Or would the board like to move forward tonight with the motion to clean it up and do that?
I'd like to get a little, I personally would like to get a little more clarification as to what, what size fan they're gonna get, how big the refrigerator is.
It's coming out of Rick's office.
But just, in terms of turning on the surveillance, what's, what is wanted, and can the words announce what's wanted?
Sure. And then the other question is, Joe has said to me, Chief Rebecca, that he is more than welcome, I mean, he's more than willing to come here and speak to you if you'd like. So if you'd like me to put him on the agenda and take him at the beginning of the next month's meeting so we can get in and out, happy to do that, too.
We haven't had him at a board meeting, and I think it'd be great.
I think it'd be wonderful. He does, and his, his staff and officers do a great job, so I think, I will invite him on our behalf to the next board meeting. If he can't make that one, we'll do it next month.
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem.
Last item under deliberations is to see what action the board will take regarding the business administration recommendation regarding retained fund balance that was in the package.
Right. Kelly submitted her memo. It is her recommendation that the retained fund balance be maintained at the present funding level of one hundred and forty-two thousand for the following reasons. It ensures the retained fund balance is tax-neutral as compared to last year's tax rate. The school district budget already contains a contingency fund of a hundred thousand dollars. The district has a maintenance trust fund if urgent repairs are required, which can be used to supplement the retained fund balance with proper approvals. And then she is looking for the following motion to retain up to the sum of one hundred forty-two thousand dollars of school fund balance from the FY nineteen school year at the end of the year, available funds allowed.
May I have a motion to that effect?
Sumo.
Second.
Second by Melanie. Discussion? Hearing that, I'll start it. Is this, was there ever any discussion in recent times to do something different than this? And if so, what plans and change to support this?
We have not had a recent discussion on this. This has pretty much been in place since I arrived. You can go up...
Don't you need this budget season, this budget cycle?
In this budget cycle?
Yeah. Think you're taking any additional money out?
No, we are not. We, we have this in there with the hundred thousand contingency, we have the special ed trust fund, the maintenance trust fund, so we have worked hard to build resources that will allow us, if something were to come up. Let me give you an example, we'll just go with something that Liz talked about earlier. If the asbestos had been a major item, and let's say we had to do that wing of the building because of what we uncovered, that's where this fund with the appropriate approvals of going through this board and the co-op budget committee as well as the DOE would allow us to use those funds in that type of emergency. Or if we already used the contingency and the elevator won't run, is another example. Where basically, we, we need that elevator to be ADA compliant, so this is the type of emergency we would address.
What's the statutory limit on the percentage?
I believe it's two and a half, but I would have to go back because I'm not sure. I always get confused between Hollis and the co-op, because one of the districts didn't adopt the whole percentage. Like, if you could go up to two and a half, one of them said it was only gonna be one and a half percent.
But this is not less than that amount, right?
Right, yep. And the only other, what some districts are doing now that the board may want to consider for a future discussion, is they're using this fund to kind of plan for a significant event or expense.
Do you accumulate, you mean? As a, as a, as a secondary count?
Exactly. I'm not suggesting that, but I just wanted you to be aware that that's some discussions.
Any other discussion? The motion is to approve the retained fund balance and how, up to one forty-two, one hundred forty-two thousand, I guess the up to means making sure it's actually there.
Correct.
Haven't just finished the audit yesterday.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, our auditor's finished yesterday, and now they're doing their field work, so that takes a little bit of time, but sometime within the next few weeks, we should have a number. So we would take that fund balance that they're gonna give us, take out the numbers from the warrant articles, and that would give us our final number, which can't be more than one hundred and forty-two thousand, but it could very well be less.
Oh, you think there's a possibility it would be less than that?
I don't want to say, I don't know.
You said very well to me that it implied some expectation.
Well, because we're waiting for their number.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? And since we're going to be going into non-public, assuming you agree, and then probably just coming out to adjourn, at this point, the report out by the Observatory Department?
Well, the meeting went right along. There were some points where we were a little bit over and some under. We ended up being fifteen minutes over in our last discussion on deliberations, but I think it was a very good, good meeting.
At this point, looking for a motion to enter non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, doing compensation and reputation or disreputation?
Both.
A under A, compensation and C, reputation. By Krista. Second by Beth, and roll call vote.
Melanie, aye. Cindy, aye.
Krista, aye.
Tom, aye.
Beth, aye.
We are in non-public, eight twenty-two.